All right. Today is Tuesday, July 29th. Call the meeting to order. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number one is the ASME contract ratification.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is on the agenda just so we can give it to you guys so you can see it. This is what was recently voted on. There are a couple items in here that I want to review with Jamie, but I also wanted you gentlemen to have a copy of it so you could let me have your views on it. This definitely shouldn't be voted on today. I would suggest reviewing this. If you can, give Mr. Kelly your feedback on it to get it over to me and try to get it on the next meeting to go over and ratify.
This is what we discussed, like running up to town meeting, but we're, right?
Correct, yeah. So most of it was just some language changes and base salary stuff, but this is what you have in front of you is more of an MOA right now. And I have told Mr. Kelly to, once we look at it, look at the actual red line so you can see what's come out, what's been added, what's been changed. But I would appreciate your feedback before we vote on this. If there's anything you have that's questionable in your minds, let me know about it and we can reassess.
Sounds good. All right, thank you. Next one is a letter from Sidney Rivera who's interested in helping out with the Cultural Council. I think Sidney would be great and I don't know how you guys feel, but I know she's here during the day, during the day of the day, but this would be off hours. I just wouldn't want to get away from participating in that.
Mr. Chairman, in the past, our administrative assistant Lisa Leonard always participated on the Cultural Council, so no problem making a motion to appoint Sidney Rivera to the Cultural Council.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is certa appointments, representative, designate me. Bob, are you doing that for us this year or no?
I can.
Okay.
Motion to appoint Mr. Hinckley as a certa representative.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll do the designate me, so I'm on the... I guess I'm on the list. I guess you are the representative and I'm the designate me, which sounds like the backup person.
I was gonna say, I'm not sure which one.
Right. So, I guess it would be a motion to appoint me.
A motion to appoint?
Designate me.
Dave Warner has designate me to the certa.
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is Bristol County County Commissioner's Rep. I think it was the Gaspur. Have you done that in the past?
Yeah, I've done it. You know, sometimes participation's not great because it's a Ponzi scheme, right? The three cities have overwhelming majority of the budget, so the rest of those municipalities sit there with our thumbs in our mouth and long as the three cities say, this is what it is, that's what it is. But I'll continue to do it.
All right, sounds good. There's a motion to appoint Mr. Gaspur to the Bristol County Advisory Board.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is ZBA clerk. I know Mr. Gaspur's talked about it. We've got to involve trying to select this out. You know, part-time people just don't grow on trees anymore, but anyway, the point of this is looking for a ZBA committee clerk to coordinate the public hearings, post advertisements for the local press, prepare meeting documents, create meeting minutes. Mr. Hinckley posted on social media the other day and he's got an excellent candidate that he's meeting with tomorrow. Actually, he's got a lot of experience in town government on this type of stuff. I think he even worked for the town many years ago. So if, you know, Mr. Brown is the chair and to the town clerk, it is top of mind for us and we'd like to get this squared away. I think ideally if we can get to some one-stop shopping scenario, that would be better rather than having like clerk doing this and clerk staffing this board and, you know, combine it all into one, that would be ideal, but Mr. Hinckley's agreed to take this on and see if he can find this suitable person to do this.
Excellent. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, of course.
I was hoping to be able to sit down before tonight. Unfortunately, due to scheduling conflicts, as soon as we could come together with our time to work for both of us was tomorrow, so we'll be meeting around 3:30 tomorrow here to run over what the necessities are, what the job description is, and see if it's a good fit, and I will report back to you guys.
I mean, it's an important enough position that if you feel, I don't know, Mr. Gaspur, how you feel, but if we need to get a meeting on the books just to do an appointment, I'm open to that, you know, Friday morning, all we need is two of us here. I can make myself available, but it'll leave it up to you to decide how that goes down. But if we, you know, I would just hate to wait a couple weeks to get this done. We can report in on that.
Will do.
Thank you. All right, next item is appoint Dr. Ivy Krull as a library technician. Position pays eighteen thirteen, is twelve hours a week. This comes to us from the library trustees.
Motion to appoint Ivy to the position of library tech one at a rate of eighteen thirteen an hour. And her start date looks like it'll be seven twenty.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Next item is a letter of resignation from our building commissioner, Mr. Andy Mabola, effective August 6th. Hate to see Andy go, but respect his decision and, you know, he's served us well and he's got a lot of technical experience, but I understand he's also offered to, he doesn't want to see us leave, leave us high and dry. He's willing to help out, but his last day of employment would technically be August 6th, so it was a motion to accept this letter of resignation.
So moved.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Bob, all from my understanding, would be willing to help us out so that we don't have any overruns on permitting and things of the like. That would be great.
He would be able to assist in an interim capacity. He suggests we also look for another interim and that we advertise and see if we can find a replacement ASAP.
Okay.
All right. So I think we, I think when we do this, maybe the best way to advertise for the position is we don't know what the availability is because we went through this a long time ago about what building inspector duties versus building inspector-commissioner certifications mean. So maybe we put the advertisement out as building inspector and/or commissioner so that either/or will be sufficient for the town. We can kind of box it in that way. I think that would probably be in the best interest of the community.
The motion to initiate a posting, it'll end up to Jamie, who will come up with some language on that. It's a motion to do that.
Sold.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Jamie, we've got on here is an agitum.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
If, if the board so chooses also, I think it might be in the best interest when we're advertising as a one-stop shop, as I just alluded to, building inspector slash being or commissioner. Maybe we advertise that the town might be interested in part-time as well.
Part-time.
Part-time or full-time. You never know if there's somebody else there that's interested in doing full-time, but they say, you know, maybe they're already working part-time for a community and they say, I could pick up some extra hours, or I'm looking for a full-time, but the only thing that was available when I took this part-time was a part-time, so we could kind of do that as well.
Or retiree.
Whatever. I'm just, I'm just throwing out all the options for the advertisement so we're not sitting on our hands and we're without, you know, we're lucky enough to keep this on board for as long as we can, but I would like to properly advertise the position and leave, you know, as much flexibility in that advertisement as humanly possible to fill that void.
Yeah, we know what we went through the last time.
Absolutely.
Well, around the subject of it again, I'm just thinking out loud, and I think Jamie we've talked about this, but do any committees, any communities have building inspector slash conservation agent or are those two separate entities?
I've only heard of one. I've also heard of where the building inspector, building commissioner office handles the ZBA, as we've talked about, as far as the files are all in the, for the ZBA are in that office and the applications, et cetera, all go to that office.
So that would be something to maybe think about.
From your prior conversation.
Right, okay. All right, well, anyway, we'll see. Hopefully we'll get some good candidates or interesting candidates and figure an opportunity to reshape that whole process over there. Good stuff. All right, thank you. I guess you got it on there as an interim, so you will look for, see if we can find some interims, either with another community or past folks who've done the job.
And advertise for them.
Yep, and advertise. All right.
Building inspector slash...
I want to advertise for everything.
Yeah.
Building inspector, hard time in full-time.
I mean, if you're gonna put an ad out there, just let it encapsulate everything that we just talked about.
Shot of it.
Yeah, good. All right. Next item is the RFP for police chief and deputy chief, police assessment center.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that this be put in so the discussion can start. You've got a, originally, we drafted an RFP, we sent it to council, he had some suggestions. The rule for award is definitely a good suggestion from him. There are a number of other corrections, suggestions that he put in. I do not think it's right for a vote yet. I think we need, like, so like what Hinckley said about the previous contract, we need the board's input. We also need to make sure that the job descriptions form 30 that we send in with it, as well as, I've got a list that I know of people that are groups that perform the assessment center. I would like the board to look at that to, to make sure. I've seen one or two that were given to us by civil service that aren't in business anymore, so we have a little bit of work to do on this, but I would like to also have it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. All right. So this is just for review only. All right, good. Next items are DPW related. Dan, how's it going?
Good, how you doing?
Surviving the heat out there?
Oh, yeah.
Got a couple things that come across from your desk is regarding Blueberry Drive. I know that there's been some issues over there, so just wanted to give you the opportunity to, you know, if the board, any of the board members had any questions about it, just kind of talk about that and what you see going on over there and so on and so forth, so.
Again, it's been years and years and the road is broken apart. It's more the bottom section of it from somewhere. Elderberry turns and Blueberry keeps going down to a cul-de-sac in the back. It's really broken up and a kid just fell the other day and, like I said, we've been just putting, you know, little patches on it forever, you know, little patch, little patch, little patch, and it's just broken up, you know, the right, correct way. Again, if it's broken up would be reclaiming or, you know, dig it out and put it, but I'm trying to get away with a, that's what I proposed, is just kind of, I could overlay that section because everything's built up hills, so I can do like a 900-foot section over there, so we'd take care of that and we can all match it to the driveways and that would take care of the problem for now. And again, it's still, it's a better base so when we do do the road eventually. And the cost is roughly around $25,000, do it as a 900-foot section, I think it was like 26 wide or something like 20 something wide, I guess. I'd be putting a couple inches on it, but I figured coming, and now we'd come out of that, that $100,000 road paving line item, so that's why I wanted to come talk to the board and see if that's something you guys would consider or...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman. So I did go down when I seen it and I went down Blueberry, as you know, Mr. Chairman. You and I were instrumental in taking over Blueberry and Elderberry for the sewer problems that they had some, 12 years ago or so, right? The unthinkable was done for those individuals and I did go down here. There are some sections of the road. I noticed one section that's busted up at the bottom of somebody's driveway, but I will say this, that the roads are better shaped than a lot of other roads that we have in this town, right? So if we need to do something, you're talking about just merely sweeping up the street and then putting a...
Just kind of cleaning up.
Overlay, so it's not, we're not reclaiming because of 25 grand. I know we're not milling.
No, correct.
Not...
So what I, what I do with that situation so you don't plow, so what I'll do is I'll cut out a section just so I can blend the asphalt into it, so you got, I can't just go right over it, it'd be like a huge bump, like kind of some, so I'd like to dig out like four or five feet anyways from the end where we're gonna start and stop, so you can blend the mix into it, the overlay. So it's still gonna be a little bump, but it's not, it's gonna be, you can plow it and you can rip the, rip the, the new mix out. If you just left it buttered, just rip it out with a plow, so.
So raising the road by, what do you put, an inch of overlay?
Yeah, pretty much.
As long as we don't have, you know, that transition with driveways, right?
Well, it's all, like I said, it's all uphill, all the driveways, so it's actually an easier one to do that. Like I said, this is a kind of a quick fix. It's not, is it the best scenario? No, Kev, it's, it's...
Yeah, I know what you're saying. I've seen, we've done it, we've done it in other places, just to, like Mamish Creek was one, we did several years ago, just a quick...
Yeah, correct. That, that's, you know what I mean?
Told me pretty well, so like Mr. Manad says, I mean, I know it's from the Elderberry down, but it's just a quick patch job to make it a little bit safer and better for the residents that are down on that section of road.
I think that's a lot of, it's cracked because of the water. It gets really wet over there in the winter, so this actually will help because if you do reclaim and grade it, you should build that up a little bit because obviously it's closer to the water table, it's really wet over there and that's why it's, it's really cracking, or it doesn't have any base whatsoever, which again, later on in the future, if you do this type of work and then you reclaim it, it kind of grinds it in, you get a better base out of just doing that mix anyways, you know? So it doesn't hurt by doing that anyways, but is it a 20-year fix? No, but, I mean, that ain't a mean drag. It's gonna probably, you might get 10 years out of it, you know?
Right, yeah. It's a good band-aid.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I have no problem, but I just, I would just also ask the board that before we expend any other money from road paving, that that would require a vote of the voter selection like we're doing now.
Yep.
So I have no problem making a motion to approve up to $25,000 to repair the 900 section of roadway of Blueberry, Mr. Manad's proposing, yeah.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next item is regarding the recycling center labor opening. Dan, just wanted to just talk about that. You don't have to get into names and all that stuff, but just kind of talk about the position, what it requires, so it's strictly, as I say, in the fields, it's strictly working at the recycling center?
No, currently, currently now, the, the employee that runs this now, he works three days in highway and two days in recycling, so it goes, so he goes from Tuesday to Saturday, so he's different than everybody else. Everybody else is Monday through Friday, so he goes Tuesday to Saturday, that's part of his regular work week.
Okay.
He can't, he's retiring, so it's kind of, we got another month to decide what you guys want to do.
Yep.
But, so, again, he wants to stay on board for, for, he can do, I think, 1,200 hours or something if he does after he retires, so he could actually still run the recycling center, so that would be the Friday and Saturday, he could stay on there. The problem is I'm missing the, the rest of the week and I currently need the help. I'd rather, instead of having three days, I'd rather have somebody for five days. That's my preference just because it's, it's tough to do what I gotta do and it's, I need manpower, you know?
Right, yeah, yeah. You need workers out there and you need people to...
I got 10 million things to do and it's like, especially when I'm doing projects like this, it's tough to, and you get a guy on vacation or something, it's tough to get other projects done, you know?
So the recycling center piece of it, I understand, so, but like when you're out in the fields, like what are the skill set that you need? You need somebody who can operate machinery?
Well, I want to have operator, it's truck driver, is there? You know, that ain't reality.
So I'm just trying to get an understanding of a good internal candidate who's expressed an interest.
Oh, correct.
I just want to make sure like...
That would be...
You know, I mean, maximizing the, you know...
Yeah, again...
...skill set to match the job.
It's, again, it's, I need help all around. It's driving a one-ton that, even like, so I had a guy out today, so we had to shuttle vehicles because I don't, I needed three 10-wheelers, so my three truck drivers were there, but I needed one tons with, with, you know, with cement and stuff in it, so we kind of had to shuttle, move back to the bonds and we go drop the truck off and so that's how I get the job we had to do today. So, and just running one tons around, anything, a laborer, you know, mixing cement or doing anything like that, going for pots, okay, we're out of pipe, I need somebody to go get a piece of pipe or a fitting there. We came across, we came across a drainage thing, we didn't know it was a three-inch pipe that was coming out from somebody's cell pump today while we're going by with drainage, but we had to tie it in. We didn't have nothing to bond, I had to send somebody to go get the fittings to install, you know? That's stuff you come across while you're out in the field. So like I said, another person in general, I'd love to, and again, I'm already looking into trying to get even the guys, we've got some new guys and none of them got hoist licenses and stuff, so, but they do have municipal licenses which will take care of like the side boom and, you know, like loader, stuff like that. So they, again, you're still gonna go take a test and do that, so I'd like to get some people more involved in doing that at least.
The side boom's a special license.
Yeah, 4G, yep. But again, you can get a municipal one so they kind of integrate it with the, you know, loader, side boom, and I think forklift or something like that goes in, it's like a multi-license, which is nice, you know?
And we advertise for this position?
I have not. So again, we've just, I'm talking with the board, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So this has been an ongoing problem with DPW, water, sewer. We were gonna have that conversation because of the budget deficit this year as we, Mr. Manad and Mr. Kelly and I, we've all had, and Kathy, so we've had conversations about the allocation of our work staff, even water and sewer, right? We're unfairly putting water and sewer full salaries in water and sewer when I would say nothing less than 60% of the time with Dan doing DPW work. So we were gonna look at reallocating that and taking some of those expenses out of water and sewer, which would obviously bring up the DPW budget and just getting staffing more properly organized between, inter-functionality between water and sewer, so we can, Dan and I can continue working on that, figuring out that.
That's, that's definitely correct. It just, we don't have enough manpower to like separate them, we cannot totally separate this and...
That's where I'm gonna go, Dan, right? So, so I don't even know, I don't even know if we filled one of the other positions that we've lost. We full staff right now in DPW?
No.
We're not, right?
Correct.
So we, we have an open vacant position already, so we're already minus that one. We have one now that works three days DPW, two in recycle, so now we're gonna be down, call it a man and a half.
Yeah.
So, I think we need to hire, we need to hire, and that, that position's still in the budget, so we need to hire that person, the one right now active vacancy. We need to advertise for that. And then we need to do something to accommodate this retiree, and I think what Dan's saying to us is that individual's interested in working Friday and Saturday only for recycle.
I think to help Dan and the guys, quite honestly, out and for staffing reasons, maybe we just have to hire two people Monday through Friday, DPW, whatever we're gonna call them, advertise for, I mean, it's, you know, whatever, with the criteria of, you know, class, truck drivers' license, or just labors, whatever you need, Dan, machine operator, however, we're gonna advertise the positions, but, and then we just carry retiree for as long as we can, work in the Friday and Saturday strictly in recycle.
That's fine, whatever it is.
I mean, I'm definitely budgeted for this year, especially if I do get a...
But we're not the way, the way I just described it, we're short a day.
Yes, so now, so now, again, my, no, he ain't in on Monday, so I don't have nobody on Monday, so now...
That's what I'm trying to say. I'm trying to say fill Monday through Friday with two. We have one open vacancy with this retiree, we're gonna have two vacancies, but that one was a Tuesday to Saturday. What I'm saying is if you let the retiree work Friday and Saturday in recycle, boom, that, that's covered.
Yeah.
And then you hire two full-timers for Monday through Friday.
Treat, treat the recycling thing as a separate entity.
Yep.
Get your labors Monday through Friday, doing what you gotta do.
And then you have full staff Monday through Friday to help accommodate your situation because I've been out on way too many projects with Mr. Manad and I've been standing there watching it and it, quite honestly, it's a little bit of a it show for him and staff like he's saying. I've been there where he's sending people out, oh, I need this, go get that, and it's slowing down the productivity of the job site. So if we want, want to be a little bit more efficient and better at what we do, hiring that other person, I think, is, is an adequate move for the town.
Yeah. And again, I'd still like, again, CDL drivers, we get some older guys that are gonna be retiring, so I'm definitely wanting to try to get CDLs or get these people to try to get them, you know what I mean? And I think we should do something like, because we've had this in the past, they get the CDL through us and then they left, so that would have to be something, again, like you're gonna go for a CDL.
So this position's been advertised?
Nothing yet. No, I wanted to talk to them before they have...
Yeah, yeah, it's okay, right? So we gotta get these things advertised.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we got another month, Peter is still here for another month anyway, so...
Yeah, but it's gonna take that long to hire. We're gonna put out for advertising, by the time we interview and actually get somebody on, we're talking, we're probably talking two months.
Yeah.
So... Do you want to get the advertising, advertising going now?
I think Mr. Kelly wants to say something.
I have to sit down with Mr. Manad. We just got the form from Bristol County that as far as the retiree, how many hours he's allowed in this county, they do it by calendar year, not fiscal year, how many hours he's allowed in this calendar year and how much he's allowed to make. So we'll have to go over as far as what the retiree can actually work.
Well, once we're, once we're done figuring that out, we could do that in half an hour.
Yeah, don't let that hold this process.
No, but so we, we advertise for the two and then he and I'll sit down and look at this form. It just came in, it was done by the county yesterday night.
Good. That's from the retirement board, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll share that information with you, Dan. I'll come in tomorrow and work with Mr. Kelly and we'll share that information with you, we'll figure everything out, and then if we need to make some separate contract for one employee working recycling Friday and Saturday, maybe we'll, we'll see what the computation comes out at its currentality, right?
Would the board be, because I'm probably gonna try for one truck driver then and one labor, is that kind of to go for for now? If I get a truck driver, I'm gonna try to, I don't think I'm gonna get a truck driver for that, for the, the money, but it's worth trying, I guess, you never know what you get, but if not, then I want, I kind of want somebody, they're gonna have to go for it regardless, you know what I mean, the way they...
So when we hire, when we hire labors in the past, Dan, we always put this, you've done, I don't know what that letter is, they had a pre-employment letter or whatever, you specified in an individual's pre-employment letter that just because you're a laborer, you have two years, a year and a half or whatever to get your, acquire your CDL license, right? We do the same thing with the laborer, this time he gets an extra buck an hour to get his license, so it's, it's in his best interest to do so.
Yeah.
We can figure it out, whatever, whatever you need, yeah.
Well, just I want to kind of gear up for these guys retiring too.
Yeah, no, no, we gotta, let's get this thing going, start developing a bench and so if we need a motion to advertise the two positions...
Mr. Manad would give us which, what titles he wants to give us to hire for.
Okay.
And I'm sure you have job descriptions on file for those positions.
I mean, I'll put them both out, it turns into being two labors or two, two labors, you know what I mean, and it doesn't matter, you know what I mean? So we could put laborer, truck driver as the advertise and see, see what we come up with, you know?
You can, you're gonna do two separate advertisers, right? You can, you, you're gonna do two separate advertisers, right? Do one for laborer, one for truck driver, because depending on the resumes you get for laborer, if you can't fill truck driver, we'll go back to the pile of laborers and we'll try to, hopefully we get at least two good candidates there, or whatever.
Yeah, and somebody willing to go for it, I mean, somebody that'll willing to do it, you know, I have people come in and they just don't wanna drive, you know, they don't have trucks, so...
So, Mr. Gasp, I would ask, if, sorry for you, I know you're a busy guy, but if you'd work with Dan on interviews and come back, we could ultimately, we'll have to make the appointment, and you gotta...
Yeah, yeah, whatever, I'll work with Mr. Kelly and figure out how we're gonna, what funding we have and all that stuff to make it work.
Cool, thanks, Dan, appreciate it. Also, while I got you, um, thank you for your willingness to help out with the Lake Street project there.
Yep, so that's, that's, I'm probably actually gonna do that Thursday, I wanna get some of the hay bales, I gotta pick the rest up, I'm gonna get them all set up. Supposedly you're gonna stop Monday, so hopefully that's still a go on Monday, but we're gonna wait a day, so they're gonna stockpile it on that, in the area that we're putting with the, with the hay bales, and then we're gonna haul it out, and we're gonna put it out, I'm gonna put this at the...
To, like, an opening day? We can do that, yeah.
I thought we were doing like an opening day thing. And when the boat comes, we're gonna...
We can do that.
I think it's Monday, August fourth.
They're staging it, right?
Staging, yeah, I'm not sure if they're gonna actually...
I'll get with Scott, get you guys the details, yeah.
We're gonna, I'm gonna set up so I'm ready, so they can just go and go to work.
We don't need the boss agendas for these kinda things either, just so everybody knows, we've done things at the golf course with boards, select board members, we're just going out for a site visit or whatever, no decisions are being made, blah, blah, blah.
I don't know what boards are way to, or where, I'm not gonna stockpile the material at the barn, uh, just because it's gonna, it's gonna take up a lot of space for in the barn, and I really don't have, so, um, I actually had the guys, they're probably gonna clear a little more at the Quaker, um, wells in the back there, we got a big huge piece of property, and we've kept it mowed, and that's something like I usually save for a stage area for if you got a hurricane or something, we can, we got a place to put all of it, brush and all that, and I can check it.
So that side of it, is it dried out? Is it gonna smell?
Um, no, and then plus, this is way back, this is, you gotta go drive in for like half a mile to get to, to get these wide-open field areas, it's kind of in like a pit.
So then once it all dries out, you'll then be able to bring it back to the...
No, no, I'm gonna, I'll screen it right there, I'll let it rot out there and I'll bring a screener down there, and we'll screen it right there, bring our equipment and screen it there.
We should probably monitor it from what Mr. Wonna just said.
Oh, as far as the smell, I, like I said, I think it's pretty far back, I don't think it's gonna be an issue, but, and again, I'm, it's gonna dry out, so once it dries, before I even move it, so they want me a day or two before it gets moved, so the only smell would be near Lake Street, which, there's really no houses, I kinda, close to that area.
I know, there's just a couple homes, like, I think, the least...
Well, you got, yeah, you got one across the street there, a couple across the street and up the road, but I don't think it's gonna be...
There are plenty of cows in that neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
If I could just ask Mr. Manad, I've gotten several residents, I, I believe it's Union Street, it's down here off of South Main Street.
Yeah.
The road's a complete disaster.
Okay.
It's a little, little road that goes across from Lawson, I think it is, it crosses through Lawson.
Yeah.
I think it's Union Street.
Yeah.
Um, can we take a look at that road, 'cause that, that might be something that we may be interested in paving or overlaying, I don't know if it's an overlay, 'cause I think that road is like ten thousand years old.
Yeah, and that's probably, either it's probably chip seal or something like that, then most of them down there are chip sealed.
I know you're busy right now in Hamlin Street Drainage, Dan, so I'm gonna take a ride down there, but it's like I can't escape the residents, not that I'm trying to pick on anybody, because I'm here for all my residents, but when I go to Captain's place, it seems like I run into somebody that lives on Union Street, right?
No.
And I'm like, okay, I got it, there's three of them now that have, have hit me up far, so...
So this is like the problem with some of them roads, because them are probably unaccepted, a lot of them are unaccepted down there, I'm not positive, you know, but, so that's where I usually use millions and stuff, I do help everybody that's unaccepted.
They spent pave.
But, as far as paving, I think we should take them all over, telling you the truth, that's my opinion, I'd love to pave them all, and it's less work, it's easier for me, and...
Does that help us with our, like, funding too, like, Chapter ninety-one roads we have?
Sure does, sure does, 'cause that's...
Can you look at...
If you accept, if you accept all them streets, um, I mean, I, we got like thirty-something of them that, you know, again, we're maintaining and doing things to them anyways, so that's my opinion, I feel like we should...
Let's all go bunkers in one year, but if we can, if we should take a look at these things, right, and be a little bit more proactive instead of reactive.
Yeah.
So let's just, let's get a list of ones that we are maintaining.
Yeah.
And like Union, let's take a look at that one, right, I think we owe it to those folks, I mean, that's been, I mean, one of the oldest neighborhoods in, in the town.
Yeah.
Let's take a look at that and, and see what that, get a price together on doing that.
And, like I said, Mr. Wonna said, I think it's gonna be, it does help our Chapter ninety funding and everything else, I think that's a good thing, so, something to think about, you know, in the future.
Okay, sounds good. Well, Dan, thank you for all your work, I know it's not easy, especially this time of year.
All right, you guys have a good night.
How many more days on Hamlin?
Well, I got a little bit there, and again, see, everything looks good on a piece of paper, today was another one, so, um, we got there, the, the engineer draw the water being like five feet from where it is.
I know, I was...
I have to, I have to catch space and run up against the water, I mean, it just fit to get in there. Um, the manhole, it was built wrong, but I got them manholes built like over a year, two years ago, so am I gonna go after the guys, the manhole's wrong, we gotta cut it, and, so it's just kinda...
Who was there for that one?
That's one of them, uh, yeah, no, no, the second one, the same way.
Oh, there's another one upstream now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just get used to it then, now that's, thank God you ain't got that much further to go, there's only four more houses to go, right? You're, you're stopping, what, just below the, your middle road area?
Yes, before you get...
'Cause there's a sub-pump that's there that needs to be tied in, the corner house of Hamlin Middle.
Correct.
There's a sub-pump outlet there that needs to be captured, 'cause that...
And again, a lot of stuff wasn't even on the plan, like, we just went by when there was a sub-pump, they were like, hey, we gotta tie that in there, so, you know, so, the stuff that ain't on the plan there, it just, it is what it is.
Yeah, but, I mean, they ain't gonna know where somebody's sub-pump drains are.
No, no, well, I mean, they could've told me with the waters, they didn't get like it marked out the water services, and so like I had to kinda go in between the water services.
Oh, I know, I seen that one too, I know, I get what you're dealing with, but...
One I had to lift.
The good news, the good news is...
The pipe was going right where the water service was, so I had to raise the...
The good news, Dan, is when we're doing it, I'm sure you're updating your records to identify exactly where everything is.
And I get, like, we try and put stuff on computers as well, so, we do got most of the stuff on computer, so now I can have the computer in my thing, so we go to the cell, so, okay, it shows us where our services is, where, for the next guy, don't get screwed. So now I'm trying to tell Eric to take pictures while we're there, and throw the pictures in with the, with our paper records, so now you can paper a record, and you got a picture of what we got, we did, you know, so, it's, we're trying, but, it's like a lot of old records that, uh...
Well, not only do we have old records, we have a lot of old piping, right?
Yeah, some of the stuff that...
We got a lot of infrastructure work that needs to be done, I mean, it's tremendous the amount of infrastructure that we need to improve in this town, but we'll get, we'll get to it.